In this last meeting, the Lord decided to pervert some matters in his...
In the Bible, the Lord spoke, I have turned over, I will pervert some things.
Unprofitable things in your life, if it is not perverted, then it will pervert you. Once again, I repeat. And many of you, if I work around you and when I look into you, you have many problems in your life and families, but you don't have that seriousness. And this is a good chance for you. I did not go even to local faith home, I stay here itself. Everywhere they were calling me. And my aim is that somehow you had to get set right. I did not go even for a single meeting outside. I stopped here somehow, the Lord have to accomplish his work, so I sat here. If you sanctify, the Lord will take care of all your family matters. And sitting here, and if you imagine some other thing in your mind, and just the thing that the ship was turn over. And Satan is taking steps to pervert your workings. And Satan is desired to pervert your life. And he is laboring to turn over your family. And Satan is trying to turn over your faith life. Once again, I repeat. Four things, there is aim of the Satan to pervert. One is to pervert, turn over your life. Turn over your workings. Then a turn over your family. Then your life of faith. And he is continuously without ceasing, striving hard to turn over. But what you must do? But you must turn over what is matter. And he is trying to turn over four matters of you, but you instead, you have to turn over eight matters of him. He will try to turn over four matters of you, but you have to try, you must try to turn over eight things of him. One is... And 2 Timothy, chapter 2, verse 14, and one who heareth, and he is trying hard to pervert you. That contentions will pervert you. And where there are contentions or divisions, and there comes then false news. And contentions is not needed for a believer. And Saint Paul says in this first Corinthians, the contention is unworthy for us. And Timothy speaks, and the contentions is like a sickness or it is a disease. You may think that doing contention is a talent, but it is a disease. According to 1 Timothy, chapter 6, verse 4. You may not have any other things. And you will maintain your body. Unnecessary questions, unnecessary vain talkings and babblings, and this will pervert you. When one time comes, it will pervert your holiness. It will subvert your life itself. So we used to tell, "Don't speak more." When a man came silent, even the fool become wise. If a man speak, and even the wise becomes a fool. And when Jesus was beaten on the cross, at that time, he kept silent, and the captains of the country, they were amazed at him. Psalm 140, verse 4. "Kathawi, dunmarknun de kailalke eni ningalakiin, kodiyavanake eni vilakki retriyum, averel eni nadegalai kavilka parkrargal." Your lifestyle is what others watch at you. And they keep watching your workings. How you are? You are a prayer warrior. You are the one going to the presence of the Lord. And you are the one standing for the truth. But what the wicked is doing as Satan, he wants to overthrow your goings. Your every steps must be carefully. And Lord counts your workings and goings, and Satan purpose to overthrow your goings. And if he perverted your workings and goings, and it is well for him to blaspheme you before others. So your workings and goings must be careful. You have to take every step with care. Even if you were slipped in a single step, and you will be cast into the bottomless pit. Titus, chapter 1, verse 11. And the wrong teachings will pervert your family. It is said that if you submit not to the doctrines and truths, and your whole houses will be subverted. When one time comes, and Satan is shaking your whole family. And he is shaking your children. And he is moving your husband. And he is shaking your wife. When one time comes, the whole family will be subverted. Husband will not pray. Wife will not pray. And husband will not come to the presence of the Lord. And wife will not come. And little by little, the whole family gets upset. And totally it will subverted. In some places, we can see in vehicle, a one wheel is getting down. When one wheel goes down, and we can make it up. When it was totally subverted, it could not be done anything. And they have to control their mouth. And they teach unnecessary things, and they subvert whole houses. And all the families are sat here. In how many houses, mother did not come? If they comes not to the sanctification meeting, how I will attend your funeral service and how I will bury you? And if you die, and I have to give witness, and he is a good brother, and he fought a good fight, and he have kept a crown of righteousness for him. Every day, he saw the presence of the Lord. And he is a good believer. And he was the one stood for the faith. And he stood for doctrines. He never missed any single meeting. As a whole family, they served God, I have to witness you. Is it like that? What can you tell? I was a brother in one particular church. And youth meeting was conducted. In another church, and it was a death. And they exchanged me and sent to the place, because the brother had some duty. I went to the funeral service. It was a big crowd. I was amazed in such a big meeting, and they entered me inside. And because it was one of the believer who was great in the church. When I went there, I understood the matter. And it is the end of the song. I called her son and asked whether they will test, tell testimony. And he said, "Please don't give five the testimony." It is a time for testimony, but they said, and he got liquor. And what could do further? And the drunkard has some robe. And what does the robe, it is a seventh robe, he is a sinner. If the pastor bury him, and he will not come to heaven. And all must know the truth. And I have reverted the plate. He could not come for the sanctification meeting, he could not recance, he could not ask for the forgiveness, and he could not attend the meetings, if the Lord has taken the fuse, and what he can do? And Satan is very careful to revert your whole family, you must pay attention. 2 Timothy, chapter 2, verse 18. They overthrow the life of faith. One is, he will pervert you. He will overthrow your goings. Thirdly, he will subvert your whole families. At last, your life of faith will be overthrown. If it is like that, how would it be? Is there such overthrown incident happened in your life in this year? And you can see on the way, during a journey, many vehicles were overthrown. And what are the things that we can or the God can turn over? And one, the Lord is turning over, turning over the Egyptians. Book of Exodus, chapter 14, verse 27. And the one thing that will be overthrown is the power of Egypt in us. Hardness of heart. Whatever, they get beatings, and they never get wise, and they will not get wise things. Look into the Egyptians. And the Lord gave the ten plagues to them. And within ten plagues was given to him, and without moving or shaking, and he got beatings and stood there. When the Lord smote the first born and firstlings, and he came even after he came to the Red Sea. How long the Lord have to punish you? And he beat you, but you not were being. What does it mean? And double fold, they are put under. And this is double fold depression. And double fold depression, and he was went to a lower state. And in another part, when we see Egyptian, it is emptiness. And some, they have inferiority complex in them. We are not in the fair. We don't have knowledge. We don't have beauty. And we don't have job. And no income. Some, they have this inferiority complex, this is the spirit, it is dragging them to suicide. The other name for Egypt is a hidden country. In the inner, there are some of the hidden sins found in us. This, you must turn over. When one time came, and the Lord brought them to the Red Sea, and completely destroyed them. What does it mean? It is very essential, it should be perverted, and the water baptism truth. I don't know whether that thing is turned, turned over or overthrown, he kept it again. Again, the rebaptism is given to you. What does it baptism? I said to him, "And you are not given baptism, but you are not proper, I have to give baptism in RC." I have to give a baptism in acid, if it was given, and his own skin will be peeled out. And still, unchangeable nature is vested in you. The Lord desired to overthrow the nature of Egyptian's power. Once again, the baptism is given to you. Receiving the Holy Spirit is also a baptism. And Bible says a fiery anointing is also a baptism. The scripture is mentioning or depicting these two things as a baptism, according to Matthew, chapter 3, verse 11. In this meeting, there will be a proper or right anointing, in that, the Egyptian must be overthrown. Deuteronomy, chapter 29, verse 23. The second thing that will be overturn. And the Lord overthrow Sodom. The second thing to be subverted is the Sodom. And Sodom is a place of judgment. When the judgment came directly, is a place is called Sodom. The fire descended, that every eyes watched it. And he destroyed completely. What does it mean? Is there any sense to be judged, and we have to subvert the power? It to say so. And the sin of Sodom, it is so illegal sin. And male love, male and female love, female. And this is the peak, biggest point of the Sodom. In these last days, we can see the male are getting marriage with the male and female with female, and without a knowledge, and they were roaming around the streets. And they are asking, appealing to sit from court or change the laws. And this is the spirit of Sodom. If the spirit comes to him, and the male should not get marriage with this male. And we should not allow them to come into the church. And you have to pervert this power, the Sodom power. And book of Judges, chapter 7, verse 13. Host of the median must be overturned. What is the terms of the median? A median means as shouting or quarrelling. And it is a meaning as a quarrelling or troubling. And to a certain man of God, the Lord said, "And you must take vengeance with the hands of the median, I will make you raise to end it over in victoriously." Who was that? And you must revenge over this medianites, and I said to the Moses. To end your race victoriously, and if you destroy the medianites, and I will do so. And see how the Lord, how the word of God, the Lord has given to him. And we can see this in Numbers, chapter 31, verse 2. And let them go against the medianites, against the Lord of the median, and before that, to be ending your race, and you must completely destroy all the contentions and striving and fighting. And who did, and one who quarrelled at the faith home, and you should not say like that. And this is the spirit of the median. Until you have this pivot in your life and your ministry and in your family, and you will not have a growth or progressment in your life. One day, a police chased every vehicles. I too came there. And they stopped me. And asked the papers. And they given all the papers. And they thought someone, I will be entangled. And I was not caught up. It was two wheeler. At last, he said that you have to paste a black sticker in the headlight, it was missing. How he identified? And sometimes, there are no reasons to fight in the home. If they change the positions of the particular things in the home, and they start quarrelling, if it's so, you can take it and replace it. And going forward, they will bite, and coming backward, they will kick, and many husbands are like that. And some reasons should be that, that is the spirit of median. And you must overturn. And when we look into book of John, chapter 3, verse 4, and anyway should be perverted or overthrown. What was the reason? Because his integrity reached into the presence of the Lord. And the Lord made a prophet to come out, proceed out. And he said, "I will not come." And he dragged him, and he made him to stand in the place. And it forty days more. And anyway be overthrown. And everyone started to cry aloud. And what does it mean, and anyway shall be overthrown. And anyway miss is a tattering place, a residing place. Your house must be a holy sanctuary. Your home must be like a mini faith home. Morning prayer. Area prayers. Your house have some prayers, and prayer must be conducted in your home, else, the shouting will reach into the presence of the Lord. It should, it shall be overthrown. And we have to bring an end for all this sins that is taken up even to the heights of the heaven. And speaking evil words. And beating. Taking arms. Beating father and mother. And such a people should not take part in a communion in the next day. If you take, you must confess to me. You must ask forgiveness. And you should not tell to me, you must tell, confess to me, then ask forgiveness to God. But some, permission is not given. Punishment should be given to you, or else you will be... And withly, if I act to the drinker the damnation to himself, discerning not the Lord's body, and cast with the sick and among many a... When we look into Jeremiah, chapter 49, verse 17 and 18. And Edo will be perverted. Edo means... And it is the other name for Izo. And 25, 35, we can see this, and about Izo. And this is their nature, they are not forgiving the hatred for twenty years. And there is no, don't have the overcoming. And one who sold the birthright. He cried, but he will delay the time, and he cried. He repent, but after, when the time is not, a chance is not given, he will repent at that time. At the time, you must recance, you must recance yourself. And you must have the victory in eating. When we look into Proverbs, chapter 13, verse 6. And the wicked should be perverted. And wicked is like a troubling sea. No peace for him. When the wickedness comes into us, even if you speak the word of God, there is no use of it. And according to Psalms 50, the Lord said unto the wicked one, "And what authority you have to proclaim the word of God?" You take my word of God back, but still you use the word of God. Book of Job, chapter 5, verse 13. And one whose counsel of this will be, will be turned over. And the one person who is wicked is found. And one who is a crafty, is found in the Bible. Or the... mainly don't have the gift of prophesying and doing miracles, but still, they possess the spirit of this pervertedness. And see how this pervert gift is operated. "Peleialin manshinagi or dunmarknun, aagadiyim besit tirigiran, avan ten kankalal saikey kaati, ten kaalkalal besi, ten viralgalal bodhini sehiran, avan irdayithile tiriyavaram undu, idayvidamal pollappe pinayithu..." "He speaks not, can not speak, speaks only, speaks only." And he speaks. 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 And withly, if I act to the drinker the damnation to himself, discerning not the Lord's body, and cast with the sick and among many a... When we look into Jeremiah, chapter 49, verse 17 and 18. And Edo will be perverted. Edo means... And it is the other name for Izo. And 25, 35, we can see this, and about Izo. And this is their nature, they are not forgiving the hatred for twenty years. And there is no, don't have the overcoming. And one who sold the birthright. He cried, but he will delay the time, and he cried. He repent, but after, when the time is not, a chance is not given, he will repent at that time. At the time, you must recance, you must recance yourself. And you must have the victory in eating. When we look into Proverbs, chapter 13, verse 6. And the wicked should be perverted. And wicked is like a troubling sea. No peace for him. When the wickedness comes into us, even if you speak the word of God, there is no use of it. And according to Psalms 50, the Lord said unto the wicked one, "And what authority you have to proclaim the word of God?" You take my word of God back, but still you use the word of God. Book of Job, chapter 5, verse 13. And one whose counsel of this will be, will be turned over. And the one person who is wicked is found. And one who is a crafty, is found in the Bible. And see how this pervert gift is operated. "Peleialin manshinagi or dunmarknun, aagadiyim besit tirigiran, avan ten kankalal saikey kaati, ten kaalkalal besi, ten viralgalal bodhini sehiran, avan irdayithile tiriyavaram undu, idayvidamal pollappe pinayithu..." "Peleialin manshinagi or dunmarknun, aagadiyim besit tirigiran, avan ten kankalal saikey kaati..." "Peleialin manshinagi or dunmarknun, aagadiyim besit tirigiran, avan ten kankalal saikey kaati..." He speaks not, he winkers his eyes and teaches with fingers. But some, they will not speak. If you get paralyzed, and what will you do? He teaches with his fingers. कंगलाल साइकिल काट रे एल्लोरी एंगे पातिर्पा इवन कंदली ए पेसी टुम अंदर रिया पोइर रिया एंगे निकरे एबडी अबे कंदली ए पेसुआ वायपेसमाटा आला पत्ता कम्मु रुपा कंदल डान सिग्नल कुड़ती एर
ही स्पीक नॉट ही विकर्ड इस आइस एंड टीचर्ड विस फिंगर्स तन कालगलाल पेसी
कालगलाल पेसुआ ओर सिलर ला नम्मल गला बेसर यंगल वायपेस आदि कईकाल डान पेस
बट सम डी विल नॉट
कईकाल मोडकीटा रे पैरलास्ट आइटन एन अपन रुद
इफ यू गेट पैरलास्ट एंड व्हाट विल यू डू
अर्थ
तन विरलगलाल पोदनी से गिरान
विरलगलाल पोदनी पुण्य
ही टीचर्ड विस फिंगर्स
इधल लाम पोल्ला द आवी
एंड दी सो डी विकर्ड स्पिरिट
इधल लाय इविल स्पिरिट ले उल्ल कड़ेस याग
अट लास्ट
मथ्यू 21 2
21 12 ऑफ मथ्यू ये सु देवालित्तले प्रवेशित्तुम आलियतिले विकर्वरुलुम कोल्लीरुलुमागी यावरीम वेलीयत तुरत्तुम कासुकारुड़ि पलगेगले यु पुरा विकर्वरुलिन आसनंगले यु कविल्त
कासुकारुड़िया पलगेगले कविल्तार पुरा विकर्वरुड़िया आसनंगले कविल्तार
ही ओवरथ्रोन डी टेबल्स ऑफ मनी चेंजेस एंड डी सीट्स ऑफ डेम डेट सोल डाउज
अब इनो नै नै आर्थो मनी चेंजेस वटिकड़कारण आर्थो
डी मीनिंग इस डी मनी चेंजेस एंड दोस्त वो आर गिविंग इंटरेस्ट
रेंडा उद्देश्य पुरा विकर्वर बरिसूत आवी विकर्वर
एंड नेक्स्ट इस वन हु सोल डाउज वन हु सेलिंग डी होली स्पिरिट
अनेकर चोलर आंग बरिसूत आवी नांग इप्पो यलंद टोन सोलर
मेनी सेड डी आई हैव लॉस डी होली स्पिरिट
अबडी ओर सिलर स्पेसर
एंड सम स्पीक लाइक दिस
अद मुंडीला लाल रुके इप्पो परिसूत आवी इल्ल
इन डी अर्ली टाइम्स इट वस गुड बट नाउ डी डो नॉट हैव होली स्पिरिट
अब नी परिसूत आवी वित्त
इट मींस डेट यू हैव सोल डी होली स्पिरिट
पुरा विकर्वर
वन हु वर्ड सेलिंग डी डाउज
अर्थ इन दे कासुकार
एंड नेक्स्ट इस मनी चेंजेस
इनकी अनेकर कासुकारला मारी दान
एंड मनी मेनी टुडे मिकम मनी चेंजेस
वटिकुड़
एंड डी गिव इंटरेस्ट
एल्लार्गन कले मोड
लेट अस वर्ल्ड क्लोज अवर आइस
कविल्कप्पड़ वेंडी एट्टु कारियंगले कविल्काविटाल नाल कारियंगल कविल्कप्पड़ तू पोइविडम
डी थिंग डेट यू हैव तू पर्वत और ओवरथ्रोन आई थिंग्स इफ यू डो नॉट नो एंड डी फोर्थ थिंग विल पर्वत यू
ओर पत्तन इश्व
10 मिनट्स
अद परेक नम्म यरंगिर वेंडी दा
देन आफ्टर वी
अद परेक आवी कुल यरंगिर वेंडी दा
देन लेट अस एंटर इन डी स्पिरिट
परिसूत आवी नदीला अद परेक यरंगनो
लेट अस एंटर इन डी स्ट्रीम ऑफ होली स्पिरिट
क्लियर पन्ना में यरंगना एन इल्ल
If something was found in them.
You are the most holy god.
If they were not came to that level and you forgive them and bring them to that level.
Even if they did not arrange, I still know, see, the gracious not forgive them. And what happened then? The Lord here does supplication and they made favorable things to them.
What does it mean?
And he says, "I have forgiven everything, I have cleared out everything." Without knowledge of what are the sins were found in you and hidden in you, I have forgiven. Hallelujah, 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 hallelu- rama, rama, rama.
Hallelujah! Amen. In the truth of God, I have prayed to Jesus three times. I have prayed three times. I did not curse him, I did not curse him, I did not worship him. Only one word. I have given you all the blessings of bright light. Shine bright. In the truth of God, now you are saying that all the lost and gone ones will be praised. I will change your life. And I will save your life. Everyone!
I will change your life. And I will save your life. I will change your life. And I will save your life. I will change your life. And I will save your life.
I will change your life. And I will save your life.
I will change your life. And I will save your life. I will change your life.
Yes!
I will change your life. And I will save your life.
Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah! Amen. You are in any place. You are in any place. No matter. Just one word. One word. I have praised the world. I have praised the manna. I have praised the world's pleasures. I have praised everything. Do you believe? If you are alive, I will live. I will change your life. Tell me, Satan will go away. The beast will go away. The devil will go away. Satan will run. Tell me, Pisces will come. Parable will come. Tell me! Amen. When I saw the mountains, I had a question. In the chorus, why do you think the mountains and children are crying? The mountains and children said that the Lord is with us. Satan is not able to live without you. You are the devil. Hallelujah! Oh, Satan! Amen. Next, the gods, why do you think they are crying? Who are you? Why are you crying? That is what Satan said. The Lord is coming. How many of you are here? How many of you are here? Abishagam is chosen. Kirubai is chosen. Sandosham is chosen. Akini is chosen. Oh, silent! Oh, the devil! The devil! Amen. Let them all go. Everyone go to the Lord's temple. A child, how can he go to the temple without his mother? Do you want Sandosham? In the 12 children, this God, Jesus, will go to a child's temple. Everyone is scared. It is impossible. Because he loves him more. He loves him more. My Lord, my God, I am alive. My Lord, my God, I am alive. Hallelujah! One minute. One minute. One minute. How many of you are here? My Lord, my God is here. My Lord, my God is here. My Abishagam is here. My Lord, my God, I am alive. My Lord, my God, I am alive. I am alive. I am alive. My Lord, my God, I am alive. My Lord, my God, I am alive. I am alive.
I am alive.
My Lord, my God, I am alive. My Lord, my God, I am alive. I am alive.
I am alive. My Lord, my God, I am alive. My Lord, my God, I am alive. I am alive. I am alive. I am alive.
When Jesus was in the temple, he saw the God. He asked who was it? At that time, he was standing there. Jesus is in the temple. Amen. A new generation. Jesus is in the temple. Hallelujah! My Lord, my God, I am alive. My Lord, my God, I am alive. I am alive.
I am alive.
Everyone! My Lord, my God, I am alive. My Lord, my God, I am alive. I am alive.
I am alive. My Lord, my God, I am alive. My Lord, my God, I am alive. I am alive. I am alive. I am alive. I am alive.
Amen. How many of you are here? I have a prayer. In the Lord's name, I will pray for you. How can you say that? Satan is here. I will pray for you. In the name of the Lord, I will win. Royal saintly! Royal! Amen. Tell me, what is the prayer for me? To come back from the death. Tell me, what is the prayer for me? To come back from the death. Satan is here. I am here. In the name of the Lord, Satan is here. I am here. In the name of the Lord, tell me, what is the prayer for me? To come back from the death.
Tell me, what is the prayer for me? To come back from the death. Satan is here. I am here. In the name of the Lord, Satan is here. I am here. In the name of the Lord, Satan is here. I am here. In the name of the Lord, Satan is here.
The devil! The devil! The devil! Amen. I will go. You will see. I will see you. How can you say that? Can you stand up? You are tired. Satan is here. You will not die. One of you is a bad person. Don't worry. Pisces will run. Amen. Amen. I will see you in the world. I will see you. I will give you a prayer. I will give you a prayer. I will give you a prayer. Hallelujah! What are you saying? Hallelujah! Amen. You all, I will see your face. Don't worry. Satan is gone. All Pisces have run. You are here. The Lord is here. I will see your meat. In your eyes, my son's eyes. See my meat! Amen. The angels are coming. Angels are coming. In the name of the Lord, I will go to the death. I will go to the death. What do you say? I will go to the death. How many of you are here? In the name of the Lord, in the name of the Lord, I will go to the death.
I will go to the death.
Everyone! Oh, in the name of the Lord, in the name of the Lord, I will go to the death.
I will go to the death.
Come on, come on.
I will go to the death.
Oh, in the name of the Lord, in the name of the Lord, I will go to the death. I will go to the death. In the name of the Lord, in the name of the Lord, I will go to the death. 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 The devil! Amen. Wherever you are, you will hear one word. Your meat is alive. Wherever you are, your meat is alive. I will see you. In your eyes, my son's eyes. The devil! You are here! Hallelujah, hallelujah! Amen. Hallelujah! 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 Amen. Amen. In Sunday morning, Pastor Wilson Joseph preached. The song. Sarun Indroja. When the last sentence arrived, everyone was crying. I saw it. I saw it. Because he went to the next step. My Lord, you will come. I will do your prayer. The Lord is with you. Share with me. This is a very, very, very long song. I will see you. I will do your prayer. How can you share with us? Amen. My Lord, you will come. I will do your prayer.
My son's eyes. I will do your prayer. The Lord is with you. Share with me. The Lord is with you. Share with me. My son's eyes. I will do your prayer. My son's eyes. I will do your prayer. The Lord is with you. Share with me. 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 The Lord is with you. Share with me.
Amen. Silence!
Share with me.
Amen. One is a good person. He is here. At the end of this prayer, Satan is here. He is here. You are my friend. You are my friend. Royal saintly! The devil! The devil! The devil! Royal! Amen. This prayer is here. It is here. This prayer is here. This prayer is here. This prayer is here. This is the prayer for you. You will come. You are my friend. My God, save me! Amen. Amen. May the Lord be with you. The Lord is with you. He has blessed your body. He has blessed you. He has blessed you. He is here. He is here. Amen. He has blessed you. 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 Amen. The people who have been in the church have been blessed. He has blessed you. He has blessed you. He has blessed you. Amen. He is a great God. He is a great God. He is here. If you are like this, we should all be like him. He is a great God. He is a great God. He is here. 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 Jesus is here. Amen. I have prayed to Jesus. I have prayed to Jesus. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Hallelujah!